My makeup, okay? All right, thank you. Thanks, Chris. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June twenty twenty twenty-three meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I'm Commissioner Ozzy Parenti. Let's start by having those at the table introduce themselves, please.
Tom Tarenti.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demergen, zoning administrator.
All right, great. Okay, right to it. Our first item tonight on the agenda is a review of the minutes from the June sixth twenty twenty-three meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look those over? I had, I had no comments on, on the minutes. Anybody else? Anything?
No.
Okay, then somebody prepare to move that we accept the minutes?
So moved.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed? All right. Second item on the agenda, old business. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to bring up under that topic? You look like you're having a thought.
Yeah, we-
You all right?
We sent some language out to SCROG or someone to be reviewed for some text.
Language of SCROG, I think. Our outdoor-
Not for outdoor.
Display slash storage, we, we sent it over to Vinnie for him to draft something up for.
Okay, that's what we're waiting for.
Yeah.
So that's pending.
That is pending.
And said that they had some reservations about it or something.
That was LI.
No, that was, yeah, we read that into the record last meeting.
That's item five on the agenda. All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, how about under new business? All right, very good. Then Jack, item four is a report of the zoning enforcement officer?
Commissioner Cornell, that was gonna be my only thing to report, because Vinnie will be reviewing that language and getting back to us when, when he's got something drafted.
Oh, pending projects and moving in the right direction?
Uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to think of any potential meetings or new developments that we've heard. You know, we have some vacancies on the post road now with, you know, Bob's Furniture moving to the old Julia's location, Ocean State Job Lot is now vacant with a moved over to Best Buy, so I guess I would just anticipate in the near future someone coming in with a proposal there. They may or may not have to come in front of us, but-
Okay.
Other than that, not too much.
And the project on Smith Farm is moving along well?
Moving along.
All right, seems like we ought to take a field trip one day. Check them all out. There's a lot of things, a lot of things going on.
Are you having, we have any bad reports or any issues over there on Smith Farm?
Not on Smith Farm, um, not anywhere-
Right.
As of right now. I know they're working with the building department and fire doing inspections of each unit and everything, but I haven't heard of any negative feedback or anything like that.
No, Firelight seems to be moving along pretty-
Yeah, yep. If I have any update or hear anything differently, I'll be sure to let everyone know.
All right, very good. Okay. All right, well, that takes care of the preliminary part of our agenda. The rest is our public hearings. The first one is the petition to amend the zoning regulations. This is for the, um, to allow certain light industrial uses in the C-one zone under specific conditions. This, uh, the public hearing on this matter was opened at our last meeting two weeks ago. We decided to keep the public hearing open until tonight's meeting. And that's where we are at this point, so. I guess, uh, does the applicant have anything that they-
Um, just a brief intro of what we provided.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Sarah Sharp. I'm a land use attorney with offices at one forty-seven North Broad Street in Milford. I'm joined again by Jack Rosencrass on behalf of the applicant's DGM Partners Rye LLC and Orange Improvements Partnership. Just a couple of things from the last meeting. We were asked to provide some supplemental information on the warehousing market and the need related to clear, clear space, clear height. I think that what we provided shows that there has been a sort of a trend showing the need for greater clear height than what was needed in the past. There was an average since twenty twenty of a need for thirty, thirty-five foot clear. And I know from other projects I've worked on that the, depending on the program requirements and the construction, you might lose, you know, twelve feet or more, or it could be less, but you really don't know. You can't just take the building height overall and say that's the amount of clear height. So that's the reasoning for, you know, the current limit of forty-foot tall buildings doesn't provide us that thirty-foot, thirty-five-foot clear height. That was a little bit of a tongue twister, but basically, we, we might lose more than five feet within the building based on, you know, the, if there's a mezzanine, if, based on the trellis construction, loading docks, so that's, that's the explanation there. And we're happy to answer any question about that. And as far as, you know, non-warehousing requirements that, um, non-warehousing uses that might require taller clear heights, we don't have any sort of trend or larger data about that. I think Jack spoke about it anecdotally. And as you guys know, the goal with this application is to be able to attract a high-quality user and give us the best possibility of doing that. So happy to answer any questions, and that's it.
So first, thank you for sending that, uh, four-page warehouse, uh, sheet from, I forget which broker. Yeah, Newmark. But it's, uh, it's always interesting how things evolve over time. And in fact, I believe, uh, that Commissioner Smith had mentioned how we see and have exercised flexibility in the past in what's allowed or where the zones move between light industrial and commercial to, you know, supplement the tax base of the town of Orange in a thoughtful way. But I'd like to come back to a concern that Commissioner Tarenti had about height in that I understand and appreciate that when you're drafting language like this, you're trying to build in flexibility to throw as wide a net for the best possible users for both yourself and the town. Perfectly reasonable approach. So the que, the, the suggestion I would make, or I'd like to talk with, you know, the rest of the commission about, is that in other places in the code, and in fact, in the next public hearing we have.
Yeah. Wait fifteen minutes.
Right. The way we dealt with flexibility above the stated forty-foot height in the zone is that, um, in other sections, we say that for every additional foot of height you'd like over the, you know, over the designated height, we need two more feet of setback. Now, in your case, you had mentioned that, uh, it might only be a piece of equipment. So, you know, it would seem oppressive to drive the whole building back for an isolated piece of equipment. So if we wanted to work the language that it was, you know, the maximum height is forty feet, is for, you know, the height is forty feet, but if you can go to a maximum height of fifty, if you add two feet of setback for any portion of the building over.
Was it, I thought it was two, I, we should look-
It's two feet for every foot.
For every foot or every ten feet?
No.
Or, or is it?
Uh, I'll read it to you.
Yeah.
Thirty-three.
I just don't remember offhand-
It's okay.
... requirement was.
You shouldn't have.
If I, yeah.
You'll have to look it.
Yeah.
I had a paperclip on it, which didn't make it.
Is this, um, for our regulation amendment?
Well, this was in, actually, it's on the next application, just happened to be by not coincidence.
If you look at, if you look at the site plan on the next app-
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the zoning table.
Right.
And that table talks about the setback requirement.
Right, so it said, in this, in this case, it happened to be in this zone, it goes, additional set, setback, any portion of a building or other structure having a height more than, in this case it was thirty-five, in your case it'd be forty, shall be setback from any street line, property line, or residence district boundary by two additional feet for every foot or fraction thereof in excess.
Okay.
The, the, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, that's exactly right.
Sorry.
Oh, the only thing I just wanted to remind everyone is that I think here, because we have the setback of two hundred and fifty feet from post road, that is a much greater setback than you probably require in these other districts. So I don't, with the, you know, two, one, you know, one additional foot or whatever for additional setback for allowing the additional height, we kind of are already accommodating that with a two hundred and fifty-foot setback from the road.
All right, aren't these proposed uses fronting on that other road, the small-
Carlson.
Carlson place?
Oh.
Oops. It is, I forget what the setback there is.
Sorry, can you speak to your name?
I'm sorry. Uh, Jack Rosencrans from DLC Management.
And spell your last name?
R O S E N C R A N S.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think, um, I mean, I think the intent from the town's perspective, I imagine, is to set the building as far back from the post road as possible and as close to Carlson Road as possible. So by, by, uh, it just feels like it, it kind of defeats the purpose of squishing it as far away from the post road as possible, in terms of, um, I-
It would just seem to me that you have, I mean, your frontage, I mean, do you, you know, it's a street.
Yeah, but you know what? The, the other, the other factor may be that under the proposed amendment, the minimum lot size has to be at least ten acres.
Yeah.
So we're dealing with a much smaller parcel on the next application, on, on the next item on our agenda. So ten-acre parcel, I think what you're saying is you meet the setback requirements pretty easily.
Well, for, for Route One. Yeah, I, I don't recall what it is on Carlson, but-
Fifty, fifty feet.
Is-
That's what's in the regulations right now. You provide that you will be two hundred and fifty feet from the post road.
Yeah, so we would be far in excess of that because the intent is to locate trucks on Carlson Road as opposed to fronting any other elevation. So we, we would meet that also pretty easily. So it, it might be a non-issue regardless.
What's the, what's the setback right now?
What's the setback right now from Carlson?
Side yard.
Current, from Carlson, so for any street line, it's fifty feet?
No, what is the, what is the actual? In other words, how much, how?
The existing building, oh.
I, I don't know, right?
Well, if there's parking in front of it, it's at least forty-two plus the green space.
Yeah.
I can't imagine. We don't, we're not dealing with an application, we're dealing with the tax.
Yeah.
And listen, if the fifty feet is not an issue for anybody else, you know, we don't have to deal with it at all. I was just thinking that if we're modifying the zone-
Right.
And it does concern people, because you'd never know what's gonna be built from what street.
Hmm.
But all, all we're really modifying, though, is this, is, is the regulations as they apply to this one parcel.
Yeah.
There's no other parcel that fits it.
Yeah. And if it's, if, until you're, they're building a, until it gets subdivided, and now the frontage is on Carlson, and, you know, the question is, do you care if it's a fifty-foot building fifty feet away from Carlson? If you don't, then it's a moot-
Well, it's, it's fifty feet all around the building?
From any street line, currently our regulations say that you have to be fifty feet away. I'm taking a-
Rear yard, side yard, front-
No, no, that's just for street lines, but you have three street lines for this property, because you're on Bull Hill, Carlson, and the Boston Post Road.
Right.
So you have to be fifty feet minimum from all three of those property lines. They're providing that they'll be two fifty away from the Boston Post Road. I'm taking, keep in mind, this is a very rough measurement, I'm just taking it off of our GIS, from the Carlson Road property line to the edge of the existing building, it's reading about a hundred and sixty feet.
Yeah.
So they far exceed the fifty feet where the building sits currently.
Right.
Keep in mind, that's give or take a couple feet here, that's not-
No, but they have enough to play with that even if we had applied this, they would meet the side yard and setbacks.
With the existing building?
Mm-hmm, right.
If they decide to take down a building-
Right.
And do the loading in the back and present their front, like the front of a warehouse building to Carlson.
Right.
The question becomes, do you care if it's a fifty-foot building?
Well, if we don't, let's say we don't change the requirement, and we have that requirement, anything exceeding, was it forty feet, is going to require a-
Additional sheet to the setback for every foot, yeah. It wouldn't come into play with the existing building.
No, but I understand, but you're worried about the next building.
Um.
You're raising the issue.
Yeah.
Your requirement.
Well, procedurally, we might have to renotice, because that's, that's a change from what, thank you, from what we're, you know, asked to, to review, which was just-
Something more stringent has to be renoticed?
I, I mean, I can answer that, that, that from, um, you know, every application I've worked on, if you're, if you're making it more stringent from what was noticed, then you are allowed to do that within the same public hearing, you don't need to renotice. I wasn't clear on, it would be an additional how many feet of setback?
Well, in other places, you know, and this is, you know, it's a topic, because we're in our legislative function, we have in the past said for every additional foot of height or part thereof, two feet of setback.
Over and, over and above?
Over, yeah, so in the other, in the other case, it was, in the other zone, it happened to be a thirty-five-foot setback. In this one, it happens to be a forty.
So in other words, you could, you, you could build to forty feet high.
Just with the normal fifty-foot setback.
With the regular setbacks. But if you want to go to fifty feet, you have to provide an extra twenty feet?
Right, but what I was saying is-
On each side?
If, if it's only gonna be a portion of the building, I would say we change, you know, you, you know, I don't want to, if, if the, if, if most of the building was forty feet, and there was a small section because of a mezzanine or something else that was setback for there or a piece of equipment, I wouldn't want to have to force the whole building back. You know what I mean? It's like- Then you just say, or, you know, if any portion of the building is above this height, that that portion has to be, and then you have the additional language. I was just trying to be nice. Yeah, you're right, Donor.
Well, I mean, it would be some difficult drafting to put that together.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, it could be done, of course, but if there was some-
As I said, people, like, you guys might not, it might not be an issue, and I just was trying to respond. Tom had expressed a concern, and I was suggesting how we could address the concern.
I think you got comfortable with that, though, right?
I am more comfortable after looking at the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove the site also, and I think it's, I think it's a, a fine and a good reuse, and something other people on the board have done before, you know, you know, that, that, those uses are sort of interchangeable, because they're still meeting our original design intent of the whole zoning code, that it would go major arterial highway-
Right.
Industrial, commercial, major, you know, Route One, you know, then the residential zone. And it's a little squishy where LI industrial ends and commercial begins.
Hundred percent. So are we coming back to the original drafting of the applicant?
Yeah, you can go.
Well, I mean, if, if we're, if, if we don't, if this isn't extremely important to us, I mean, I think it's a good, good suggestion, but I, to me personally, I don't, I'm not that phased by, by the, by the ten additional feet in height that we're allowing under the new reg, you know, the proposed new regulations. I don't know, I mean, you-
No, I, I don't have a, a strong feeling about it either way. Fifty feet is not gonna make or break it, meaning another, extra ten feet is not gonna make or break it, it's a fifty-foot setback over there. They, I understand this building's a hundred and sixty at its worst, if they knock down the building and hit the fifty-foot setback, I, I don't see the, I don't see the big issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's still a fifty-foot setback.
Yeah.
And to do anything more than that would require a variance.
I don't know who's gonna, I don't know who's gonna complain about that, you know, back there.
Right.
And from a practical standpoint, the building's gonna be more than fifty feet in any configuration, because even single-loaded parking's forty-two feet on a sidewalk, plus a green space buffer, you know, you're, you're well off that fifty feet anyway, so.
The only other thing that I remember we talked about was this, when we're talking about uses, was to eliminate bus terminals. Is that acceptable, or?
Yeah, if, um, we, we would be happy to remove bus terminals from that subpart four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did that two weeks ago.
Right, I don't want that to sort of slip by the, go by the wayside.
I had that written down as well.
Was there anything else that we were, you know, particularly concerned about in?
I just was gonna, and I'm sorry, I should have done it before the meeting, check the parking requirement against the warehousing information that was sent to us previously, or does this one space per fifteen hundred mirror other parts of our regulation?
So, um, the, I don't know if it mirrors other, our, our suggestion of one, one space per fifteen hundred was based on what we saw in the market and what we expected to need, and I think that what is in the warehousing says one per thousand, right?
Well, we drafted that, that ratio based on other municipalities and what their ratios are.
Correct.
I don't know exactly which towns you, you referenced.
If we're specifically, I'm sorry, if we're explicitly looking at warehousing, wholesale business, truck terminals, four spaces for each thousand square feet of office space, plus three spaces per loading day. That's what our current regs ask for.
And just so I can elaborate, because we didn't talk about it last time, the, um, that parking requirement would be very difficult to accommodate on our site, and I think that we did discuss the fact that some of the parking requirements are resultant in an overparked scenario. So we were trying to reduce this to what we would actually need, and we, the one per fifteen hundred was not just to accommodate warehousing, it was also considering, you know, potential lab use and some of the users that we had approach us and understanding what their needs were. So we really tried to tie it to what we were seeing in the market as the need to not have overparked.
Manufacturer, processing, or assembling of goods, which is another use that would be allowed here, is two per thousand by our current regs.
So it'd be six for three thousand, and you would be two for three thousand right now?
Mm-hmm.
At the fifteen, yeah.
But again, it only applies with respect to these particular light industrial uses in the commercial zone. It doesn't apply.
In that, in that newly formed zone, in this particular property?
Same zone, just new uses.
Same zone. In other words, if, if, if you, if the proposal was to have one of these uses, A, one through four.
Mm-hmm.
The, the parking applicable would be one space per fifteen hundred square feet. But it doesn't change the parking requirements in the commercial zone?
No, but I-
Or the parking requirements in the LI-two zone, for example?
No, but we just heard from Jack that the, and, and I'm not sure how to appeal about this yet, but we just heard from Jack that in the manufacturing, in, in the zone for the manufacturing, is that, were you quoting LI?
If this were an LI-one or LI-two zone, which is where you're normally gonna find warehousing, wholesale business, truck terminals, manufacturing, we have a more, uh, we have a higher requirement per square footage currently in our regs.
Right, he's, it, we're, for three thousand square feet, there would be six spots, and for there, three thousand square feet, there would be two. That's all I'm trying to get from.
Well, but in our regulations, do we differentiate between truck parking that's overnight and car parking? Because I think the way things are going, if I'm reading this correctly, is that, uh, or, you know, the Amazons of the world have delivery vehicles, you know, that park, or the tractors and/or the trailers are in the spots, um, on the site to move things around.
I don't think that's the parking we're talking about, though.
No, no, it's not, but there's, there's basically two different phases. So back when we didn't, you know, you know, we thought it was a warehouse, you thought a truck was coming and a truck was going, and, you know, and there were employees parking. Now there's employees there, there's trucks parking overnight, and there's trucks coming and going. You know, it's, it's, it's like a, you know, we saw it with the FedEx building, you know, they had different-sized spaces for different types of users. But it doesn't do them any good to build less parking than they need for their tenant.
Right.
You know, so really, the onus is, is on them.
Your first name was Ja, uh-
Jack.
Jack, sorry. So in other, uh, shopping centers and buildings like this- So in other, uh, shopping centers and buildings like this, your one per, your one per fifteen hundred square feet has been the norm?
In, in non-shopping centers, but in, in more light industrial uses, that's the norm, yeah. And obviously, depending on the user and how much office space they have relative to warehouse space.
Right.
It, it, it varies, and everyone has their own requirements, but in terms of a site plan layout, that's been what the ratio that we've seen a lot of.
So Sarah's comment about being overparked in its current, I don't know if she was referencing the other L I zones.
Our current, uh, parking requirements are excessive. I think if we were.
In the L I two, in the L I one.
In the L I two and L I one, if you ask me, in most of our districts, where we currently have them, we haven't really touched them up in a while, not saying that we have to.
Plenty of parking no tenants?
Commercial, yeah, or commercial and industrial.
But that's not applicable on this app, on this application.
Right, right, no, I'm just saying, overall, our parking regulation requirements normally exceed what tenants actually need.
Yeah, I, I, I ran into this out in Long Island where you were like, had to do three, three car space parking per thousand on warehouse. And they're using it as a backdoor way to cut down the density because then they land bank two out of every three.
Wow.
And wound up with a nice big green field.
And that's a lot of what our regs do as well. I've gotten, not complaints, but, you know, developers call me and they say, do you really need all these spaces? And you can see it around the Post Road, I mean, look at the site now, it's a sea of parking, and, you know, you're not for want of a parking spot there at any time of the day.
Uh, in, in our regs, do we differentiate, I mean, uh, you know, we're using the word here that says one space per thousand. Do we differentiate between, you know, car vehicle parking and other?
Uh, I think it depends on the use.
Well, what I'm saying is, so if, 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 if you leave it at one space and someone does a site plan where we think we need twenty-five cars, and they do fifteen cars and ten vans, or ten, you know, tractors or stuff, did they meet the code?
I don't think we.
I, I thought, I understood the parking regulations to regulate, uh, you know, like in the commercial zone, it would be, you know, customers, and it would be employees.
Right.
Not, not necessarily vehicles that were used in the operation.
Right, so when it says space, I'm just saying, if we don't say, you know, car park, you know, car, a, a, you know, uh, since we don't say what the space is.
Yeah, take the, the, the parking at, uh, FedEx, right? Well, the parking requirement didn't apply to, uh, trucks.
No, I don't think our language specifies two spaces for normal passenger vehicles, two spaces for tractor-trailers, depending on your use.
The requirement was for, you know, how many you would need for employees.
Or, or customers.
Yeah, but I mean, at a place like that, though, you know, I don't, I don't know that they had that many customers.
So, so if we just use the word here, one space, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
And then the application comes in, we're assuming that those are going to be vehicle spaces for employees or customers or something like that.
Well, I mean, or, we're, we're going to require, we're going to, we're going to want to know how many employees there are and do the calculation, determine how many.
Are we going to have the discretion if we go for one and there's going to be more? I mean, we're, I mean, I, I don't know if I have a problem with this at all or not.
No.
Yeah, no, no.
It seems like it's, it's okay for the.
I just was wondering if it needed to be more specific, what type of space.
It, it matches the current, I see, I totally see your point, but it does, it does match with what our current.
We'd have to change, we, yeah, I mean, we'd have to change the parking requirements for, you know, or, or add a definition, or.
Right.
No, that's okay.
Yes, the, the way it's currently rated does match our.
But, but tell me, tell me again, though, I mean, it's, you, you're proposing one space per fifteen hundred square feet for these industrial, I call them industrial uses. In the light industrial two zone, it's how many?
Two per thousand.
Two.
Again, it, it goes by, by user, it doesn't go by zone, goes by use and square footage. So we're just going to use warehousing and wholesale business and truck terminals as our example use.
Yeah.
That's four spaces per thousand square feet of office space, plus three spaces per loading bay. So if you were in our light industrial zone and I wanted to bring in a warehouse, that's what the standard I would be held at.
All right, so that doesn't tell us much, I mean.
Yeah, you'd have to have an application with four thousand feet of office and twenty loading docks.
We don't know what we're going, what it'll do.
Exactly.
But this is on the gross floor area, right?
Uh, I, I believe that's correct.
Gross floor.
I think, um, you know, just to sort of bolster what Jack said about the, you know, current parking standards, I did see in your P O C D, um, even from two thousand fifteen, this is on page seventy-nine and eighty, it's identified that there are, you know, multiple uses that are, that the parking requirements are too high and that it's been an issue for development. And I think that our goal here was to set a standard that doesn't result in overparking based on the requirement. Obviously, we will want to park based on what our tenant needs, but not setting a standard that ends up with more than you need is, was sort of the goal. And that's how we came to the number that we, we came to.
Again, I, I, I guess I don't see this such a big issue, given that it's, that that requirement applies only to, uh, a small number of uses that would be permitted uses, permitted by special exception in the commercial zone, so. I mean, yeah, that's the standard, but we get a, we get a close look at it, you know, when the, when the application comes in, right?
And to Jack's point there, the, the parking lots on the Post Road are incredibly underutilized.
Right.
I mean, think about Munson's.
Yeah.
Target.
Yeah, Target.
Or even Home Depot and, you know.
It's been a common theme that our current parking regulations are excessive, which we might want to keep, but compared to other towns, they're seen as high.
Okay. All right, is there anything else you want to?
Um, the only other thing that we discussed last time was just about the consistency with the P O C D, and I went back through, and obviously, we had included two points in our, in our narrative that relate to encouraging redevelopment along the Post Road and encouraging economic development in your area that's been designated for economic development. And, um, I think this accomplishes both of those goals. Obviously, with the P O C D being written in two thousand fifteen, it doesn't really contemplate the, um, declining retail demand and some of the things that we're facing now, which is why we're here looking for a creative solution. Um, but I did also note that on, uh, page eighty-two, there are several suggestions for potentially simplifying or modifying your existing zoning districts that talk about creating zones that maybe, uh, that have a mix of commercial and industrial uses. So I get, I think, again, this is sort of a test case that I, I think that, um, section of the P O C D also supports this application.
Yeah, didn't, I, I don't know if I'm thinking of the same section, but if, if I am, that section was really talking about, like, we had L I one, two, three, and four, with, with very.
Minor difference.
Minor differences, and could we consolidate, right? Is that the section you're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, but also with the, um, commercial zone, it talked about consolidating the different commercial zones into just one commercial zone and then allowing some uses by special permit that, to me, seemed to be more industrial. They were, um, wareha, or not warehousing, I'm sorry, they were, um, repair garages, contractor shops. They seemed a little bit closer to light industrial, so I just wanted to point it out.
Not as much of a, a retail component.
Correct. Uh, allowing them by special permit, so.
Okay. You, you all have this narrative, right? Okay. All right. I think, I think that, that does it.
Okay, thank you very much. Nope, that is it.
Did I take my, uh, big old poster?
Yeah. We're going to need the room for the next.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wants to, uh, speak on this application? No, I, I don't see anybody. All right, then, I guess at this point, our, our question is, are we comfortable closing the public hearing? Do we need any more information? I mean, the only thing I, the, the only thing I wanted to do was to take a better look at the, you know, closer look at the plan of conservation and development, which I did, and I basically see, I can agree with what they have in their narrative. I don't see anything really more than that that's, that's applicable. And I know you wanted to take a ride by, I don't know if you got a chance to do that.
Yeah, no, I did, and I, I think it's a, a reasonable and natural place to, uh, allow the, to blur the distinction between the commercial and the, the light industrial zone under a special permit type of consideration.
All right, all right, well, why don't we get our motion then to close the public hearing, and then we can talk about this a little further and.
So moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Fight in favor, none opposed? All right. Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're right, I mean, you know, I, I see it the same way, you know, it's, it seems like, uh, a good place to kind of blur that distinction between commercial uses and industrial uses. I mean, it, you know, what, what's, what's being proposed, the uses that are proposed, you know, most of the, 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 uh, other districts in that are, are light industrial.
Right.
And so it seems like it's heading that, in that direction anyway.
But it's going to blend in, no one's going to know the distinction, or at least it's not going to be a big issue.
I don't see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think this is not the last time in the near future we'll be visiting the issue.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're, uh, we're victims of, uh, you know, evolution.
Yeah, and, you know, this, this property sits on the, you know, right on the border, on the, you know, between two zones. And, um, you know, I can see how it could be utilized well in, in, you know, either way, that, you know, as a commercial use or as an industrial use.
Right, and it's, it's, uh, it's not going to take away from the retail character of the Post Road, given the amendment text, uh, because the people who are going to continue to use the Post Road as, and invest in the Post Road as retail deserve to be, you know, are concerned and protection.
I mean, from our, from that standpoint, it's two hundred and fifty feet away from the Post Road.
Exactly, so it's no impact.
I mean, I, I could conceive of an industrial use that sort of fronts on Carlson.
Yeah.
And have that buffered from the retail.
Right.
You know, the, the commercial use on the Post Road.
I think that's pretty much what they're proposing, they're talking about some kind of barrier.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the people parking at the old Stop and Shopper are not going to care. And the ABF Freight won't notice.
And I, I think the other thing is, uh, I, I agree with, you know, what they have in their narrative regarding conformity with the plan of conservation and development. Uh, I would suggest that we adopt that as a, you know, that narrative as a, as our finding, that it, uh, assuming we're going to approve this, that it's, um, you know, that, that carries the day.
It's in the record.
Yeah, it's in the record. All right, anything else?
I just want to make sure we strike bus terminals.
Bus terminals, that's come out.
In our motion, we'll strike bus terminals, and we, assuming we were to move to approve, we could have an effective date of June twenty-seventh, which would be a week from today.
I don't think, you, you know, when we move to, if we, if somebody is prepared to make a motion, I don't think we need to recite conformity with the plan of conservation and development other than to say we're adopting the, uh, you know, the suggestion by the applicant, you know, on that issue. So somebody ready to?
I am.
Okay.
There I go, I'm moving, shaking. A move that we approved, the petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by D G M Partners-Ry LLC and Orange Improvements Partnership to amend Section three eighty-three forty-two, Section three eighty-three dash forty-three, Section three eighty-three dash forty-five, and Section three eighty-three dash one forty-three point nine of the Orange zoning regulations to allow certain light industrial uses in the C one zone under specific conditions. As part of the motion, uh, we're going to strike Section four of the proposed application. We're going to have an effective date of six.
Wait, wait, wait.
Just the bus terminal.
No, just, I'm sorry, what did I say?
We're not taking out four in its entirety.
Oh, just the bus terminal four, I apologize, yep.
Just to reference the bus terminal.
Um, with an effective date of six twenty-seven.
Uh, correct, yep.
Uh, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Um, and also that, uh, I find that it conforms with the, um, on many of, or at least several of the, um, of the mandates, or recommendations, I should say, of the Plan of Conservation and Development is outlined in the application.
Very good, has someone prepared to second the motion?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, okay. Very good.
Good luck.
Come get a lab.
Good luck with that. Find somebody right away. All right, next item, uh, final item on our agenda is an application for special exception permit in use. It's a, uh, application for a special permit and also site plan approval for a, uh, proposed storage facility on Salemie Lane. Let's, uh, start by opening our public hearing. Paul, do you have the legal notice?
I do, I can.
Can you read it for us?
Uh, to appear one time on Thursday, June fifth, I'm sorry, June eighth, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, and one time on Thursday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Orange Town TPZC. Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P M. at the Orange Town Hall, six seventeen Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. Application for special exemption permit or use submitted by Montar Group LLC for the properties known as sixteen and twenty-two Salemie Lane to construct a one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred square foot self-storage facility. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department dated in Orange, Connecticut, this seventh day of June, two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, thank you, Paul. All right, the public hearing is open, the applicant is present.
Thank you. Um, again, I'm Sarah Sharp, a land use attorney with offices at one forty-seven North Broad Street in Milford. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Montar Group LLC, for a special exception permit concerning the proposed self-storage facility at sixteen and twenty-two Salemie Lane. I'm joined by Dan Moore, the Vice President of Development at Montar Group, and he'll go over some of the building design and, um, be here to answer any questions. And we have Jeff Ford, our professional engineer with Bowler Engineering, who will walk you through the site plan. I wanted to hand out, um, for the commission, these, uh, copies, and for the record, a color, colorized rendering of the site plan in Arial, and then some paper copies of the architectural drawings that were reviewed during the department sign-offs, but I don't know if a paper copy made it to you, so I wanted to make sure that we provide that tonight, so.
Yeah, I don't think we saw the architect.
I don't believe we did.
Okay. I mean, it looks very much like we saw when we approved the change in the regulations.
That's correct, so, um, I, obviously, everyone remembers the regulation amendment that you approved last December.
I don't, I don't need one where. All right, as long as they have one for the record, you guys can use them now.
We do have a full-size copy, too, so before we leave here tonight, we could give you, okay. Um, so as you'll recall, that last December, um, December sixth, actually, two thousand and twenty-two, you added self-storage as a new special permit use allowed in the I L two zone under certain conditions. It's no secret that the target, um, of that regulation amendment was the Salemie Lane parcels that we're going to talk about tonight. The proposal satisfies the location requirements that were in that regulation amendment, and, um, it just makes a lot of sense in this location, we're right off ninety-five. It allows a productive use of this remnant industrial parcel that I know was discussed during the regulation amendment process. And a couple of highlights, um, the proposed building height for the, is forty-five feet, and you'll recall that. recall that during the regulation amendment process, I think we were allowed up to 55 feet, but we did not end up needing that additional height, so we have a 45-foot-tall building. And then, like I mentioned, that prior to our formal submission, all of the application materials were circulated for department sign-offs. We received sign-offs from the engineering department, the fire marshal, the health department, building inspector, and the traffic commission, and that was, those materials were included in our submission. And I'll let Dan speak more about the building, but, you know, what we've designed, and I know what you saw during the regulation amendment, we tried to develop an attractive facade. Obviously, it's self-storage use, so there's a limit to what you can do with the building envelope, but we've also maintained a lot of the existing vegetation and, you know, tried to incorporate some decorative plannings that will be visible from the entrance on Salemie Lane. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan to talk briefly, and then Jeff will walk you through the site plan.
Good evening. Dan Moore with Montar Group.
Nice to see you guys all again. Uh, yes, substantially the same plan as what we discussed in December when I came for the, the text amendment. Slight changes just with the positioning of the building, but again, the elevation is substantially, and rendering is substantially the same as what we had presented prior. Shifted the building slightly only because of the, the before-mentioned, uh, additional setbacks to get the, the, the height that we, we needed for the 45-foot. I believe it's 35 feet. We needed the 20 extra feet of setback to, to get to our 45-foot. Yeah, again, it, very, very similar to what we, we presented. These small changes were based on some feedback from the, from the departments that we've had to make, so...
That, that's the view from Salemie?
This is from Salemie, yes, as you, as you enter the site from Salemie.
So you turn left into the site?
Correct.
It looks like, you know, it's, there's trees, a lot, a lot of trees, forest. It's, you're just gonna clear what you need to clear for...
Correct.
And then you're gonna leave all that nice buffer in the back and on the sides.
So we do need, and it's in the package, we do need on the rear side towards the Yale property, we do need some additional area for our detention pond, and Jeff will go over that when, when we get to that. But, but yes, to the extent that we can, we will leave, leave the trees that are there. Yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna tear extra trees down.
Right. It's enough to clear.
Okay.
Okay, so we can...
Yeah. Fine.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Board. It's B-O-R-D with Bowler Engineering, located at 65 LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut.
Is that Jeff with a J or a G?
J. We do have a Jeff with a G, but Jeff with a J, I spell it right. So just to acclimate you guys to the site, so our site's shown in black right here. North is to the top of page. The Homewood Suites are right here, exit 41, On Ramp, West Campus Drive is right here, and then the Yale West Campus is up here. Marsh Hill Road is at the intersection to the west, and then accessing the street. So that view that you were looking at from an architectural standpoint is looking right here at our entrance drive and into the site, which is essentially... It's basically that view right here. So you kind of see the articulation, the corner right here is what you're looking at in that view. So the site's 2.06 acres. It's at 16 and 22 Salemie Road with intersection Marsh Hill. It's a light industrial zone. It's, it's a wooded lot, as you saw from the aerial image, so we are, we are clearing what we need to, where we can maintain some of the existing vegetation, we are. As I'll get into when I go through the site design in a minute, there were some fire safety issues that we had to address via some emergency papers and fire truck access that we did after the fact, that we coordinated with the fire marshal, so that I'll go through. So we have one, one main entrance here. It's two-way access, 24-foot drive aisle. There is a gate here that's secure, loading area in this location, and there's a total of 13 parking spaces. We're required 13 by code. We're providing 13 with one accessible stall in this location, serves the office area on the side here. There's a trash receptacle, recycling on the east side of the building. And then one of the, one of the benefits of what we were able to do here with some of the land around the building from a stormwater standpoint, you try to keep as much natural, best management practices as you can from a stormwater standpoint. And in this case, we were able to handle the stormwater from the parking area in the front here with just two catch basins and an underground detention system in the front to treat water quality. And then that basically exits this system here, and then it goes down to a detention system on the east side. So you can see the buffer that's remaining over here. That treats water quality as well before ultimately discharging to the northeast corner of the site where water's discharging today. So what we did in our design was we mimicked the existing drainage patterns where everything currently drains in this direction to that end of the site, and we basically matched or reduced peak flow rates for all the storm events, in addition to treating water quality per the water quality manual. So it's a pretty sophisticated stormwater design for a small two-acre site, but it's unique in the sense that even on this side, there's a stormwater swale that wraps the basin and then comes down, so all that water's even being treated prior to it discharging off-site. So one of the unique things here, lighting has been provided, so we are using the LED dark sky compliant fixtures throughout the site. There's only a few fixtures to light the whole parking lot in the front here, then the building lights, and there will be security lights on some of the exterior doors. Landscaping, as you alluded, this is just a colorized version of the site plan with the landscaping turned on, so we paid careful attention to this area here with the residential home on this side, and then in this area here, you can see that all of this existing vegetation will remain. What might be hard to see for you guys, and I don't know if you can see it a little better on the 11-by-17s, this is the area here that we identified with the fire marshal. We ran their apparatus through this, did the turning maneuver and everything, got that out, and then one of the other requests was the extension here, so that in the event a fire truck pulls in the front, they can just swing around without having to back up around that corner to get out. So that was one of the late additions. Other than that, as Sarah alluded to, there were no engineering comments, and we satisfied the traffic comments that we received from the traffic commission, so... Erosion sediment control, there's not a lot of catch basins, but they will be, they will have silt sacks installed, we'll have a construction entrance, we'll have silt fence and silt socks, just as a redundant measure on the slopes on the low side, and we'll have a soil stockpile located away from the stormwater management facility, so... Utilities, we are proposing a sanitary connection to the rear, to the north, and we have a water extension we're currently requesting out to Marsh Hill. And then electrics off of a pole right here that feeds the transformer before coming into the electric room on the corner here, so that's at a, a big level. There's not a lot of site features on a, on a self-storage facility here, but we were able to cram in quite a bit for the development here, so happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. So Jeff, the sanitary sewer connection, that sewer goes through Yale?
Correct.
And belongs to?
There's an easement, we're, we're currently working with the adjacent property owner to obtain rights to connect sewer in that location. One of the things that we, and we're confident we'll get there, in the event that a connection cannot be made to that location, we have left an area in this front area where we can do a septic system for the one, there's, there's a couple of bathrooms in the facility. It's not a big septic system.
Not a big load.
Nope. And then we would just have to go back to the Board of Health and do some perk tests and everything else, but in reality, that's kind of how we came up with the design where stormwater was coming around the side, and then in this location, which left this whole top corner for septic in the future if need be.
All right. So with, with respect to stormwater, you have basically two components that get treated separately and then joined together. You have the roof run out, and you have the, the parking lot.
Correct.
So the parking lot basically goes to two catch basins, which have sumps to take out particulate matter.
Yep.
Go into the detention basin.
Correct.
And then it both recharges and/or builds up to a spillway, which is this OCS 104?
Correct.
If it has to?
Yep.
And then it comes out?
So basically, you're exactly right. So the two catch basins here capture the, the parking lot before discharging into this basin. This basin's been overdesigned in the sense that water will then first exit out this, so that's just a catch basin set in elevation. Water spills into the top before exiting down to here, and then that's just provided in an emergency situation that's over and above any storm design.
All right.
That we'd have to account for.
Then the...
And then the roof water is what we're actually putting into this underground detention system here, and that ultimately bypasses this basin because we're infiltrating and treating water quality from the roof even. So it's kind of belts and suspenders in a way.
And I'm sorry, because I couldn't deduce it from your plans, where does the, you know, Barracuda, you know, water treatment structure go? Is that at the intersection of those two pipes before it exits the site?
Yeah, typically, it would be right here. I'm trying to think from a Barracuda standpoint. It would be on the outside, it would be after your detention system and infiltration is where we would have that.
Okay, but it wouldn't also be, uh, dealing with the water from the parking lot?
No.
Okay. It's only for the roof?
Correct.
All right.
Jeff, with, with respect to the storm drainage on the, the west and north side?
Yes.
Did you say all that stormwater is getting to, to the northeast part of the site?
Correct. So in existing...
I don't see how that's happened.
So in existing conditions, when you just, when you take a look at them, the contours aren't on here, but everything slopes right now in the wooded condition down in this direction. So when we do our pre versus post calculations from a stormwater management standpoint, we have to calculate the time it takes water from landing here that gets down to this location, and then you compare that to the impervious we're adding, which is then how we size the underground, we size these, and then the swales themselves. So ultimately, what that means is, once we come up with our proposed design plans, the flow of this swale is just catching the water that's landing in the lawn area and coming down this way.
That I can see. What I can't see is how it works on, on the north side. Everything seems to be graded.
Yep. Everything grades off the building, and that was to maintain height, and then in existing conditions, there's a natural swale that comes down and ultimately discharges from this point, so there's no...
Oh, this swell here?
Correct. There's no direct connection, but what we did was match what was down there, so it does appear water's coming off of that hill, but then it's hitting that natural swale that's already there and coming out. So when you do compare flows from the west side, the east side, the roof, and then the east side here, all the flows are less than what's going offsite today, just based on how things are sized.
Okay. The only other question I had, and I, it might just be that I can't see, is I did not see a fire hydrant on Salemie Lane or on the plans. Is, is there one that I'm missing?
Yeah, then I'll have to double-check our utility plan. I know the goal is that we will have a fire hydrant in a location over here based on conversations with the fire marshal. We're working to get...
I hope it's there.
Yeah, we're working to get flow tests done right now as well with the water company to, to schedule those, so...
But I don't see one on the plan.
I think that's the intention, is to add one as we move forward here. So we're gonna put one off of the main that's coming here. We're waiting for a flow test to make sure we have adequate flows coming off of Marshall.
So if we were to act on that, on this application, and it was a condition, that would not be a problem?
It would not. Nope. We have, we have a location for it. We were planning on adding it, so that would be perfectly acceptable.
Is it in the fire department's approval?
As far, the only thing the fire... I, I don't believe they specifically asked for, I think they, they specifically asked for just the egress lanes. I don't know that it came up during the fire department review.
The fire marshal did sign off.
No, the fire marshal signed off, but was he signed off? Detention done?
I don't believe so.
From a safety and insurance standpoint from our end, we would prefer to have a fire hydrant onsite regardless whether the fire marshal would, uh, requires it or not, so we would absolutely agree with that condition.
Correct. And there's a dedicated fire line in domestic, so it would be easy enough to...
Yeah. Then that's why it was a question.
What was the hours of operation of the self-storage?
So typically, the buildings are open 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The office is occupied from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I don't recall if there's regulations specific to that in, in Orange's ordinances. We would obviously comply with those if there are different, different ordinances.
I'm not aware.
No. I was just curious. I mean, it's not a big traffic generator.
Correct.
So, but I was just curious.
But I think maybe for the record, and for anyone interested especially, if there is a residence, you know, next door, I don't know what's wrong, if it's a residence, residence or business, but, uh, are we reading the plan correctly that there's the area in which your patrons will be using is about halfway down the building, you pass through a gate, and then that's where you enter the building to enter the self-storage? About the...
Correct. Yes, the... The elevator and lobby here in the, kind of the center of the building. Correct.
So from the, from an external observation point, the majority of the activity that's gonna take place during the day is gonna be about halfway down the building from the entrance?
Absolutely.
There, there may be a couple of employees who come in in the morning and park in those other spaces, but the majority of the activity is much further away from...
The residence.
Your, the residence.
Correct. That's correct.
Seven?
Seven days a week or no?
Yes.
All right. So it would seem to me that the fire marshals need for safety and that grass-created apron running, I would call that north, south to north on the west side of the building, if that's about right, kind of limit how much landscaping you can do to buffer the adjoining property owner?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and basically, it's hard to see here, but where our limit of grading ended up being based on this, there is still a mature tree line that's basically right along this edge, so we didn't take down, we basically left that in place, and then on this side, we just looked to screen that view shed coming back on that side.
All right. I'm, I'm not a landscape-type person, but is the, is the buffer you're going to be planting of a, you know, an evergreen nature?
Yeah, I'll have to double-check the landscape plans. I know there are some evergreens, but deciduous trees, and then there's some ground plantings as well around the transformer, but...
You're talking about the south side, Kevin?
I'm talking about the, the, where he just was running his fingers, is the only real opportunity we have to soften up the view with some, like, evergreen-y stuff, because as the, the hardwoods mature or in the winter, along the property line, you know, it's gonna, you know, you're just gonna be staring at the side of a building. And there's not a lot of activity there, so it's...
We have the landscape plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could go far up, too.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of evergreen-type plantings. I'm not a big tree guy, but dogwoods, holly.
I mean, you have 70 feet to the building.
And you have some mature existing, existing trees there.
Yeah, where, and you start losing, like, you know, you're, you're looking at trunks for how far up. But, uh... Because that, that was the only, you know, impact per se that I was looking at is, and...
That's a residence to the west.
Yeah.
Correct.
And they have, they're relatively set back also, plus you have 70 feet, but...
How come the fire marshal didn't want access around all four sides of the building?
So they, they just needed access in this location to service the back, and then from this location, it serves that side.
And they can get that back corner?
Correct. And then this was just for the egress movement to come out.
And it, and if they were really worried about it, you could go to the next road. What is the next road by?
Up here.
But, no, that, no, that's a lot lower.
Yeah, that is.
I wondered about that, too, Judy, because there's the trap, is it, was it?
It, it has to do with, with hose length and, as, as how they, so...
No, but there was the, the...
Trash receptacle?
Is that, yeah. That blocked access, I would...
Yeah, well, it's a swale for the recharge case.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, but you couldn't drive a fire truck.
No. Correct.
Well, you go in, you can't get out.
Helicopter.
Once.
What are those plantings in that, in the proposed plantings?
Dogwood. Ink berry, white mountain laurel. Rhododendrons. Rhododendron.
Those are...
White pine.
Yeah, those are pretty dense, and they're basically evergreens.
Yeah.
But...
And if that wanted, you made a condition of approval that we'll explore evergreens in that area. Our landscape architect would come up with something that's aesthetically pleasing. Because that's how we came up with this. But if the intent was to put some evergreens in here to supplement what's already in this buffer, we could certainly look to do that, no problem. It would just be swapping out species or two.
Just trying to think about being a good neighbor.
Yeah, agree.
I mean, but in terms of intensity of use, the amount of traffic that's gonna go in and out of here is a lot less impact to that person than some of the other things that would've gone in.
How many units total?
Well, practically anything that I can think of.
Practically everything you can think of.
I can't think of.
Even a residential house could generate more.
Yeah. How many units total on this thing?
Storage units?
Storage units, yeah.
Nine hundred?
It's around nine hundred. I don't recall the exact number, but it's in the neighborhood.
The fire marshal, the road that he requires on the west, is there any way to get it? If you got it closer to the building, that would leave more of the existing trees.
I think typically, one of the reasons you want to avoid, if it's up against the building that's four stories tall, is if they're parked in some sort of fall zone. They like to be a little bit further away, which does create some situations. But I think addition of some evergreens in that location could help to soften that a bit.
Okay. Any other questions on the site plan? Are you about done?
All set, there's no other questions.
The retaining wall is basically on the L-shaped dog leg of the parking lot?
Correct.
Alright, and that'll be filed as a separate permit when you get the building permit. They'll have to pull a permit with a stamp.
Yep, a structural engineer designing it, yep.
There's a modular wall, so...
You've seen him built wrong.
What's the construction time?
We saw it on the post-throw.
Well, it depends a little bit in Connecticut. When we start, this one's going to start probably, if everything goes well, December, January. So, it'll extend it a little bit. Typically, our construction time's about a year on these deals. This, again, we'll start, again, if all goes well, we get our drawings in, we get our purity permit relatively quickly. We'll be starting in the winter, which is not ideal. They'll extend my construction timeframe a little bit, but maybe by a month or two, so...
So, you would be finished January 2024, 25?
Twenty-five, twenty-four would be awesome.
Yeah.
You're hired as my general contractor.
Twenty twenty-five.
DOT says otherwise.
Alright. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on the application? Okay.
Can you help me leave these up for your discussion?
Yeah, sure.
I'll grab them after.
Well, how do we feel about needing any information from outside of this room tonight to decide the application?
Do we need any information? Kevin raised the issue of the, of the fire hydrant. I assume that fire marshal didn't just miss that, nor did Vaughn. So, we can make it a condition?
Yeah, just make it a condition of approval. And they typically go at the takeoff at the road because it's just another valve connection. They're sitting right there, they plug in a T, it's...
I couldn't imagine that they'd get insurance, for example, if they didn't have a fire hydrant there.
Well, when I was driving out there, I didn't see a lot of fire hydrants.
No.
Yeah, I mean, but I was only looking for this.
You live in a nice area of town like where I live, there ain't a fire hydrant.
You guys come with buckets?
That's what you're talking about.
Don't you have a stream near yours?
Yeah, and I got my wife, so she'll do everything. That's our problem.
Good luck.
Kevin, is there any location framers you would want in that condition for the fire? You know, just specific language, southwest corner or...
I mean, so, I mean...
Just for the purposes of the notice?
The fire, they're gonna want it, you know, in the, just either in the road right away or just off.
Okay.
But it's, they, there's only one natural place for it over in the southwest.
Okay.
But, you know...
Yeah, I just didn't know how specific you wanted to get with...
I don't, I just wanted...
Just want one?
Understood, understood.
We just want one.
I just want one.
Put fire hydrant, got it, that's what I'll put.
Jack, is, everybody's signed off, all the department heads have signed off.
Correct, yes, sir.
It appeared to me. And you're comfortable on all the strictly zoning matters? I mean, it looked, I mean, you know, it looked fine to me, my review of the site plan, the requirements.
I think it fits in...
Front yards, side yards, you know.
Bulk-wise, it fits. The language that we approved last December, basically, you know, was, we had a good idea of what, you know, was gonna be proposed then. This fits the language that they put in. They ended up not needing that extra height, which is nice. You know, obviously, a residence being right next to it is always a primary concern of the commission. And I think if we, you know, have a few more evergreen trees as well as what's shown on the plan now, I think, you know, accommodations have been made.
Yeah, I mean, it actually strikes me as anticlimactic tonight. In that, you know, we knew what we were, what we had approved. Yeah, what we signed up for, and they brought it to us, so... You know, we do need to make some, you know, there, it is a special use application, so we do need to, you know, pay attention to the general conditions or considerations that are laid out in Section 383-136. And other findings we need to make, as well as findings as to consistency with the plan of conservation and development. But I think all of that we could handle on our own. I don't know that we need any further input from the department heads with respect to those matters. Alright, so then is there any reason to keep the public hearing open at this point?
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Alright, we have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so five zero, public hearing is closed. I don't know. Like I said, it strikes me as we're getting exactly what we expect. The only thing I hadn't seen, when I reviewed the drawings and the application, was the architecturals. But then I remembered we had them from December when we approved it, and they're the same. So, I mean, you know, it's, to me, a nice-looking, a nice-looking building, almost, you know, corporate-headquarters-y. You know what I mean? It's, so, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with the way it looks. Judy, what do you think?
No, I mean, it meets the regulation. We've already previously decided that this is appropriate use in this area. And we have a...
Sorry.
I know.
Yeah, so we contemplated this type of use in this area, and they've come forth with a proposal that meets the regulations.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the general considerations under, you know, for special permit, for special permit, special uses, talks about the size and intensity of the proposed use, which we had already given a lot of thought to. The effect of the proposed use on any adopted comprehensive plan of development, but we'll come back to that one. The capacity of adjacent and feeder streets to accommodate peak traffic loads and any traffic hazards that may be created by the use. I can't see that being a problem.
Too small in here.
The effect upon property values and appearance in the neighborhood. The number, location, and arrangement of off-street parking and loading spaces and the vehicular access to the lot. Fire and police protection, we have to sign off from the department heads. Water supply, sewage disposal facilities, drainage and erosion. I think we've presented adequate plans in all those respects.
Question, yes, since they're showing a sewer connection that they don't currently have an easement for, does it have to be subject to that or...
No, I think it's gotta be...
Subject either that or a plan acceptable to the town sanitarian.
Okay.
Okay, that permits the...
That works for me.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to put it in our, in our motion, but they're not gonna get a building permit without it.
Okay.
Right, I mean, you know...
I don't know, they were getting it without a fire hydrant.
We should, we should mention it.
I thought they said if they didn't get the sanitary easement, they were gonna go to septic design.
Right, but I mean, it's gotta, they gotta...
But does it have to come back to us? I don't want it to come back to us.
I wouldn't think that's...
You need to do something.
Yeah. Oh, good.
And I think that's it on the special permit considerations. And the other, the other finding that we need to make is... Well, that all applicable requirements of this section have been met in addition to other requirements applicable in the district in which the special use is to be located. And the special use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of these regulations. So, I mean, the use, to me, conforms, and I don't, you know, I don't see any problem with that. So, as far as all the special permit issues or considerations and requirements, I think we're, I think we're all set. On the plan of conservation and development, I hadn't really given that thought as to how it...
That's with zone changes and tax amendments.
What's that?
You have to find consistency to your plan when you have zone changes and tax amendments, but not some with special use permits.
But here it says it though, it does. It says, "The site plan and the architectural plan shall be in conformance with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan of development."
I have a copy if you'd like to.
So, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that we, I mean, it's a use that's permitted.
Permitting use of vital business?
In that, in that location, in harmony with other uses in that...
In light industrial zone.
So, I mean, the plan of conservation and development tells us to promote business where it makes sense.
No, listen, it's exactly where it should be.
Yeah, so I, I don't see any, I don't see any issue with that either. What else?
It'll be subject to a bond?
Yep.
Like everything else?
Yeah.
We have to say that in the motion or no?
Yeah, just with the rest of the conditions, yeah.
So, anything, Kevin, anything else? No. Alright then, I guess we're ready for a motion. I take it to approve this application.
Why not?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the application for special exception permit of use submitted by Montar Group LLC for the properties known as 16 and 22 Salem Lane to construct a 121,200-square-foot self-storage facility. Also in the motion for approval should be a requirement that there be a fire hydrant in the southwest, I believe, corner.
Yeah.
There should also be a contingent upon a connection with, I believe it's Yale, for the purposes of connecting to a sewer.
Other suitable sanitary...
Or the requirement that they have another sanitary disposal, waste disposal method approved by the town sanitarian. Also, go ahead.
The trees.
Yeah, I'm gonna get there. Yeah, so, a statement from, or the applicant is going to use best efforts.
On using best efforts, I would hope.
To, on the west side of the, of the property to plant as many evergreens and, and, you know, coverage as they can to diffuse the houses to the west side, or houses to the west side.
Alright, so that, what happened, did that, in a bond?
In a bond.
I also find that the proposal conforms with Section 383-136, general considerations that we've already discussed, as well as conformance with the plan of conservation and development in that it's a new business, it's a business that conforms to the zone and promotes business interests in the town. Also should be subject to the usual bonding requirements.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Why so hesitant? Alright, we have a motion.
So controversial.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, five zero to approve the application.
Go for it, Bill.
That's until January 20, January 2024? Alright, thank you. Alright, I guess that concludes our agenda for this evening.
Prove to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, it's been seconded.
Now you're ready to say it.
All those in favor?
Now I'm ready.
Aye. Alright, adjournment at 8:24. Thank you.
Thank you.